The meeting of the Prairie View City Council will come to get ordered July 20th, 2019, at 6:09 PM. Ms. Bynum, would you start up the call, please?
Yes. Councilman Roland?
Here.
Councilman Randall?
Here.
Councilman Jones?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Wallace?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. And if we could stand for a brief invocation of allegiance.
Father God, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for each person that's in assembly today, Lord. We ask that you just be in the midst of this meeting, Lord, that it be productive and let it bring forth positive fruit, Lord. We ask that every head come together to move the city in a positive direction. We thank you for the things that you're doing within the city of Prairie View. We give you all the praise, honor, and glory in your name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I would want on the agenda is a proclamation to Sandra Bland. Ms. Bland was initially stopped in the city of Prairie View. She was ultimately arrested and taken to Hempstead and all those things, but the stop actually occurred here. And with ultimately finding out it was essentially an illegal stop, she was actually arrested for an assault that never took place. And unlike most people, I can say that because I was there. I watched the trooper not only take her out of her car, but take her up to the sidewalk and handcuff her. So we have a proclamation that I'd like to present to Judge Charleston. Do you two carry to the family for me? Can you read it into the record? A proclamation in recognition of Sandra Bland. Whereas Sandra Bland was a graduate of Prairie View A&amp;M University and was here to start working on July 13th, 2015. Whereas Sandra was stopped in the city of Prairie View on July 10th, 2015 by a DPS officer. Whereas Sandra Bland died on July 13th, 2015, at the age of 28 while in police custody in Waller County Jail in Hempstead, Texas. And whereas Sandra Bland wrong for death was affirmed as such by the United States District Court for the Southern District of Texas in 2016. And whereas the Texas Legislature passed the Sandra Bland Act in 2017 that requires county jails to divert criminal health and substance abuse issues toward treatment and requires that independent law enforcement agencies investigate jail deaths. And whereas Sandra Bland was an activist for racial justice who was wrong for death, was a call to action across the United States to change the way the criminal justice system produces unequal outcomes. Now therefore, I David Allen, Mayor of the city of Prairie View, Texas, do hereby proclaim July 10th, the day she was illegally arrested for an assault that did not occur in Sandra Bland Day in Prairie View. We just trust you to, as you're such an activist and in touch with the family, to let them know that we recognize her for death, for even the stop that led to that. Appreciate it, Mayor. And next we have a presentation of Community Engagement Board. Councilman Wallace?
Can I stand right here? Or do you?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
It's been a minute.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Sylvia Sidio, and I'm just speaking as a city member and as a taxpayer. And I just wanted to, just to let the citizens know who were here who missed the meeting just a moment ago, the workshop, that the city has now held two workshops. Today was the second one with regard to a single agenda item, which is discuss and consider possible amendments to the City of Prairie View Charter. And this is really just kind of more a message to the city council to ask if for any meetings in the future, one, that you have legal counsel present because you're working to examine a charter, which is a constitutional document, which is a legal document. And I would just encourage you to have counsel present to answer questions. The other thing I would do is I would encourage you, as I stated earlier, to contact the Texas Municipal League and ask them, how does a city examine its charter? What is the process for doing that? And educate us collectively so that we know. Because I've heard people up on the dais say, let's set an election. I mean, I'm paraphrasing. Somebody has too much power. But no one has said, I have studied how you amend a charter. And this is the democratic process for doing it. No one has said that. And we are looking to you, our legislative officials up on the dais, to let us know what you know. And it's okay to say, I don't know. Because that's where our home base of the Texas Municipal League comes in to provide that training. That's why we're paying the high dollars to our legal counsel to help guide us through that process. And I just want to caution that I don't like the language where it says, we got to set an election. We don't. Because when you start working on that psychology of people, they feel they have to change something. We may not have to change anything. It is the process that is more important than setting an election. And if you don't know what you're doing, again, it is okay to admit, I don't have all the answers. But we are counting on you to get them and get the proper resources, give us the proper education so that we can do whatever we need to do, whether it's form a committee, whether it's to have more workshops, whether it's to engage legal counsel to do a training, whatever the process is, please get it done. Because coming to two meetings in a row with a single agenda item that says discuss and consider possible amendments to the city charter is not effective leadership. I want you all to be successful up there. This is not successful leadership. And if anybody was at the meeting, you will know what I'm talking about. All right? So I encourage the city to do that, and I look forward to working in any capacity that I can. Thank you.
Ashley Jackson?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Jackson, and I just want to bring council's awareness to a few things. First, I want to thank Councilman Roland for always, well, mainly being the one to ask the uncomfortable questions. My parents were here at last city council meeting, and one of the things that they did say was, you did that very diligently. And they appreciated that, having a child in Prairie View and they're living in San Antonio. Another thing that they said were they were utterly disgusted by how the city conducts business. Coming from a big city, of course, Mayor, you know how the city of San Antonio runs. They were disgusted by how things were conducted. Especially when we're talking about Bureau Veritas and city engineering, they were disgusted by how you all spoke to one another, how things seemed to be put off. So I want to make all of you aware of that. Another thing I wanted to point out, I didn't get to speak at last city council meeting, got off work late, but Bureau Veritas came, Ms. Rogers came, and she said something that stood out to me. She said that if they go into a building, whether it be a housing building or any kind of building you all asked them to go into, if they fail it or partially fail it, it's up to the city to have that entity fix the problem before they say, hey, go ahead and occupy. But let me point something out. I've seen the inspection records for Panther Hill Apartments, and most of the buildings either completely failed or partially failed. In that, all of those buildings were still granted COs. So I want to know, why were no questions asked? Why were these things not fixed upon letting students move in? And then when things started to happen, everybody was like, oh, well, hey, things happened. But it could have been prevented, and it was up to the city. And not just, you know, maybe counsel asking questions, but, Mr. Mayor, your signature was on the CO. You issued those. So why were no questions asked? I'd like to know that answer. If you want to have a private conversation, cool. I just want to know the answer to that because I have cousins that are still going to be here once I graduate in August, and that's unacceptable. These things need to be checked up on. Don't wait until after to say, I want to see the inspection records. No. See it before the COs issue. And when that's done, then you can say, okay, we did everything we can. Another thing is, I've talked to many students. We have a big group chat, and we talk almost every day. And a lot of them said, well, I'm moving back here because I have nowhere else to go and it's the best we're going to get. City's not going to do anything. They didn't do anything last year. Why would they do anything now? We might as well just deal with it. And I think that should hurt. It hurts me. I don't know if it hurts anybody else. But take that into consideration because some changes need to be made. Also, students don't feel supported when it comes to off-campus housing, not just Panther Hill. And Councilwoman Williams, she stated a few meetings ago that we can't just focus on Panther Hill Apartments, which is true. I agree with that. So like I said before, ask the questions. Don't let Councilman Roland be the only one asking the uncomfortable questions. But question yourself as well. Because if you have a question and you don't ask it, and later on something happens and you don't even, you know, think about it twice, what does that say about you? Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor and council. First, let me say, thanks. You finally got the light on the water tower. And that's on behalf of the citizens of the city of Prairie View because I think you've pointed out many times in the asking that that takes place if a low-flying plane hits that water tower. It mandated that we put that light on that water tower when it was erected back in the day. So I'm glad to see that that light is on. I did, I want the community to finally get it done. I did come to the meeting, come to the meeting that Attorney Sidio referred to, and one of the things that was pointed out, I said to you and the rest of the council, before we started the Home Rule City, when I was asked to join a meeting to ask my opinion, I said to, at the First United Methodist Church, that in my opinion, we, the first thing that should take place is education, education, education. And I noticed that that word education continues to haunt us now because I know that many of us didn't realize the pros and cons of Home Rule City. It was a boilerplate, boilerplate Home Rule City Charter that was brought to the table. It was passed. I don't think the citizens at large supported the Home Rule, but I know that we did have enough votes to get it passed. So being that, I'm glad to see that education, education is hoped to take in place, and I hope that we can become educated and find out exactly if we need to amend the charter, that whatever we need to do to make that charter, Home Rule Charter, applicable to us here in Prairie View for the best interest of the citizens, of taxpayers and citizens of Prairie View, I hope that takes place. And I have no problem with participating. I think that the selection of members who participate in making that happen, I think that we have some people, that some citizens who are interested in and have some experience and could probably bring something to the table. And I hope that the council will bring that into fruition when you finally select a committee. The next thing I want to ask a question as related to process. A lot of things that we, I see happening, it touches me, it's called process. I don't have any problem with building, bringing new buildings to the city, new ventures or whatever to make the city pliable to us. But it's the process. I look at the process. I noticed that one of the, one of the things that I noticed that you have on the agenda tonight to discuss the process, discuss and take action, the documentation officer Mosey is certified to handle the K-9 unit, and that's on the agenda. Well, I noticed that you all paid the parking lot, all the parking lot? And I asked a couple of council members about it, they said you know nothing about it. And I was wondering if that was a gift. Did the city pay for that? I'm wondering if the city paid for that? And I'm going to ask the city attorney if that was a donation by anybody. Was that supposed to be a part of the records? Or is that just a solid donation? Who did it come from? Or was that, in fact, did the city, and being open record, I would ask Mr. Johnson, I would like to see the record to see, when did the city pay for it and when was it approved by the city council? I mean, I know that the city, we need the parking lot. The other thing I want to point out is accountability. I issued a videotape to the council members, I think most of the council members said they did get the tape, and it had to do with the water meter being used by a private company. The water would be in, and I have the tape, and I want to show it to the city attorney because I'm going to ask, what's the process of that? Is the city available to give, donate water to a private company? What's the process? I mean, no water meter. Had there been a water meter on the fire hydrant, then I may just say that is a process of understanding how much water was being taken. But this videotape that I showed to the council, there was no meter. So I'm wondering, how does, now I have a meter. As a private citizen, I have to pay my water bill. And I doubt if I, if I think that if I connected fire hydrant and watered my grass, I think I would be charged. So I need to know what's the process of allowing a private company to connect a large fire hydrant, I mean, fire hose, fill up a pump or truck, and then there's no meter. What's the, I mean, how do we do that?
Mr. Levitt, you have six minutes. Did you need another minute or so?
Yes, sir.
Start wrapping up.
Please.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. And from that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And from that, on four occasions, I witnessed, on Rich's Road, it happened, I did make note, they did come back and put a meter. I noticed that. Only after I reported. On Oak Street and Clark, that's the one that I took the video, so there's no question about that. On, even there's a fire hydrant in former Mayor Sam's yard. There was a fire hydrant, a fire hydrant inside of the fence. So there was a fire hydrant, I mean, a hose, no meter. I did report it, and the next day there was a meter placed on there. So I guess I'm wondering, what's the process? And then once a company, or once, is there a penalty for that? Is that considered theft of service? So I'm going to ask for, I would like it documented to me as to what's the process and what's happened after, after that process is done. I want to know what's, what's, what's the, they can explain.
Back to you, Ron.
Good evening to members of city council, mayor, everybody here, your lovely faces. I always love to see your lovely faces. I have three things I needed to bring up. Number one has to do with the members of city council and the mayor. I'm going to strongly encourage you, and I know some of you do, but I'm going to strongly encourage you to begin to, rather than complain, 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 what I would strongly encourage you and even challenge some of you to do is to bring, before the end of this year, bring at least one business investment potential to the city. Just one. It doesn't have to be two, three, four. Whether it's an emergency medical clinic, or a dentist's office, or a grocery store, bring one potential business investor before the city. I challenge you to do that. Number two, for the citizens, I mean, for the individuals who do business with the city of Prairie View, those businesses that we write a check to every month, I'm going to strongly encourage you to do business in Prairie View, whether you're buying gasoline, you have choices, or you're buying fast food. You got a couple of choices on that. Our, whatever businesses, dry cleaners, do business in Prairie View. And the reason that's struck to me because I saw one of our vendors today pumping gas at the Shell Station in Waller. And I started to turn my car around and go tap on his window and do one of these to him. But nevertheless, if you're doing, if you're getting a check from the city of Prairie View, I just think it's a good idea that you put some of that money back into our economy. Third point I'd like to make, I keep hearing the word process, process, process. When I was growing up, that was something you did till you're here. I don't know nothing about that.
Long time.
But processes, I just want to remind you all, and I know that you're well aware of this, but processes emerge from procedures. And we have big books of procedures. We have a city charter that gives you procedures. We have city ordinances. We have procedure books. And so if we have a process that flows from the procedures we have in place, then it's not a one-size-fits-all. We're having situations, businesses to come to Prairie View like we've never had before under Mayor David Allen. We have new situations in Prairie View going on that we've never had to face before, and a lot of it is driven by the university's student enrollment because they chose to increase the number of students that they have. And the city has worked cooperatively with the university in order to help facilitate their need. So these processes that we talk about, I think it's important that we look at the procedures we have in place. We also take into consideration the fact that we have all these novel entities arising in Prairie View. And instead of complaining, 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 and you know, being a born-again Christian, complaining is a sign of ungratefulness, and that's demonic. Instead of complaining, 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 what we need to do is come up with some ideas how to facilitate this enormous growth that our city is experiencing. Yeah, it's uncomfortable to me. I don't like having to back out of my driveway, go down a block, make a U-turn, and come on just to get on to 290. That's inconvenient to me. But the university wanted it as a beautification project. There are a lot of things that are inconvenient to us. But a lot of the inconvenience comes about as a dynamic growth in the university, as the Texas A&amp;M system has mandated that so many, 10,000 students be at Prairie View within a certain period of time, and we want to facilitate and help those. And instead of us being grateful that Prairie View is expanding the way we do business and what we have to offer in the city, I just hear grunts and complaints, well, they don't do this, and they didn't do this, and they failed to do this, and they failed to do that. Well, to me, come up with some ideas on how to make it better. Come up with some plans. Okay, we're inviting this particular business in. We're inviting, I'm on the board of EDC. I haven't heard anybody, any of our city councilmen have come to us with a plan to bring businesses into Prairie View. Not one. And that bothers me. So what I'm challenging, the three points that I'm making, I'm challenging every person on city council to come up with at least one business that you've gone out and talked with and encouraged to come to Prairie View, or even had a conversation about coming to Prairie View, to Lake Andre. Brother Dwayne Charleston is doing a book, Come Home to Prairie View, that's designed for businesses to get interested in coming back here to do business. You got $100 million being generated by students on the campus. I mean, we have all the pieces together, but we need to work cooperatively to build the city in a way that will meet the needs of the university and the citizens in here. Number two, I'm challenging, I'm requesting, every vendor that does business with the city of Prairie View, if you get a check from us every month, you need to spend some of that money here locally. Before you drive back to Houston, or Cypress, or Austin, or wherever you're going, stop and fill up your gas, your gas tank in Prairie View. And number three, I'm encouraging you all to look at your procedures and allow whatever processes you deem necessary to flow from your procedures. Thank you.
Councilman Wallace, you ready? Now we'll go back to the presentation, Community Engagement Board, by Councilman Wallace.
Well, good evening, citizens of Prairie View, council and mayor. So we've been, me and Jonathan Randall, we've been working on this idea, called a Community Engagement Board for a while now. And so throughout this presentation, this is not the end-all, be-all. It's just for y'all to see the idea of it and be able to give your input at the end for what you may think would be better edified so that it can be as efficient as possible. So.
Point it up, point it up higher, there.
Yep. Okay, great. So background, so how did the Community Engagement Board come to life? So first, the students of the Community Development Program at Prairie View established a community analysis plan. I proposed the idea that community engagement boards need to engage the citizens of the city of Prairie View. So students of the Community Development Program, the master program that I'm a part of, they gave a community analysis plan, which I think they gave it to us last December. They said, one thing is that y'all need to engage the community more, that citizens feel like they are part of it, and they have a chance and a say for all of that happening within the city. So Councilman Randall, he made a motion that we start advocating for a citizen advisory board, I think, it was in December, I think in December, right after that. for Citizen Advisory Board, I think, it was in December, I think in December, right after that, the rest of the council agreed on increasing the capacity in our city. And I'll explain a little bit of that later. So what's the purpose of the Community Engagement Board? The purpose of the Community Engagement Board is to find new ways to connect with the citizens, garner new methods to gather community input, and to have community-based initiatives to help build a people-first, family-first, safe, and village-minded city. There we go. So what's the importance of a Community Engagement Board? And what's the importance of community engagement? Well, one, community engagement is a foundation that runs the city, right? If you have citizens that, that are not involved, that don't like what's going on, you can do any and everything that you want to, but you still won't have a satisfied population because they feel like they weren't engaged in the process. So when you engage the citizens, you gain a couple of different things. First, more positive feedback, right? A lot of people, they want their voice to be heard. So even if maybe a good idea, they may not be susceptible to it because they feel like we weren't a part of that process. Participation, right? You want to have as many assets in the city in terms of people to be involved in the things that are happening in the city. Passion, right? You're more passionate about the things that you are directly involved in. Cost-efficient, cost-efficient problem, problem-solving idea. So we have issues within the city. And so instead of going outside of the city, paying for other people to come in, identify our problems, we can have a Community Engagement Board of citizens who will volunteer at a time so it can be cost-efficient and it can solve a problem. Diversity, we have a multitude of different towns within the city, people that have been through different things, different professions. And so you bring it, you diversify your city because now you're bringing a multitude of people together. And lastly, you just have an overall happier community because they feel like they are engaged in the everyday efforts of the city. So what is asset-based community development? So asset-based community development is a concept that we are learning in, uh, our community development class. So what is it? It is a strategy where you identify the problem, but you use the people already inside the city to try to elevate the city. So like I said, so some people, some cities, like, they have an issue, like, with recycling, right? They may go to a third-party recycling company. When you got a citizen that can help on a day-to-day basis clean up, do some type of initiatives. So it is using the assets that are already in the community to move it forward. So whenever you have a Community Engagement Board, a couple of things that you can do. You can, uh, do asset mapping, building, building capacity, have a community engagement strategic plan, and have defined outcomes. And I'll explain all those shortly. So first thing, asset mapping. So when you have a community, when you have a commu, you have assets within the community, no matter what community you're in. Man, so assets, they're breaking, they broke down into five different things. First is the physical assets, like lands, buildings. So let's say the Waller County Community Center, that's an asset to the City of Prairie View, right? You can have different events to bring people together in that building. Or let's say the Alumni Building. The Alumni Building could be an asset to the city because you can use...